Alrighty. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regularly scheduled board meeting of Tuesday, June 27, 2023. We do have trustee Turner joining us via Zoom. Time is now 5:30. Madam Leve, can you call roll?
Trustee Benz.
Present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner present.
Trustee Soto.
Soto present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster present.
And trustee LaFrenche is absent tonight.
Thank you. 1.04 Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Moving on to adoption of the agenda, Madam Leve, do we have any proposed additions, deletions, or adjustments in the order of business?
Madam President, we do, and my apologies, I cannot find my my notes, but I do have the information. We are pulling one item tonight. And Mr. Kraus, if you want to verify that, that would be for item. Let's see. 1408. For Violetta Martin Umbrella Theater. And this will be tabled to the next meeting. And then also, Madam President, if you look at 14. Sorry, 13 new hires. For 1256, 12.56. Employee 7897, Assistant Principal of Academic Instruction for Middle School for Columbia has withdrawn his offer. And that's it.
I'm sorry, I have a pen ask for you had said 14.008.
I'm sorry, Matt. No, trustee Benz, it's a.
Returner. Face time video.
That was an error. It's 12.56. 12.56 Administrative New Hire, Employee 7897, Assistant Principal of Academic Service of Instruction Middle School has withdrawn.
And then, but you had also mentioned the con.
12.08.
Okay, 12.08.
That is correct. For by Martin. And so that one will be tabled for the next board.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Leve. 2.02 trustees, I need a motion to adopt the remaining of the agenda with the exclusion of 12.08 and 12.56.
Okay, Benz, I motion. Motion to approve the the agenda. Agenda. With with the out with the change changes.
So do I second that motion.
Madam Leve, can you please take the vote?
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz I.
Motion passes for zero. Moving on to cabinet reports, 3.01, Mr. Kraus.
Check, check.
Thank you, Mr. Sinatra. Appreciate that. Starting over. Good evening, Madam Clerk, members of the board, members of the community in the audience with us this evening in person. And those of you out in the land of Zoom, we appreciate you joining us for our board meeting this evening. I'll have a few comments and then I'll turn it over to our cabinet in a minute to give some updates on their various departments. So this evening, I wanted to say that we're excited that our summer school, we're excited and saddened though that our summer school, we've had a great summer school this year. It's coming to an end this week. We've had many opportunities to go out and visit our schools. We'll be going out again this week as well to say goodbye to all of our students and staff that were instrumental in making this another wonderful summer school. So thank you to all of our classified staff, certificateated staff and management that helped really give our students an extra boost of education over the summer. Those students that were able to join us, and I know the families really appreciated it. This afternoon, I was able to go out at 11:00 AM at Ted Vic Elementary, where we have our summer feeding program, and I appreciate Julie Nichols and her team in CNS for feeding our students and families over the summer. And I was actually able to read to them. I was invited to go out there and read, and I had the pleasure of reading a book Frozen. And then I actually played a few of the songs from YouTube about Frozen to them as well. So I hopefully I didn't bore them too much with that, but they seemed to enjoy that while they were eating their lunch in the cool weather because it was hot today. Next, I'd like to congratulate again, once again, our team from Melva Davis Academy of Excellence. We had the privilege of joining them in Washington DC, where they were recognized on the national level of schools to watch recognition. So we really appreciated the opportunity to go out there and really showcase what is going on, the work that's going on at Melva Davis Academy of Excellence. And so I wanted to thank the staff that was able to go out there, as well as we were honored to have our very own Melva Davis, the namesake of the school, join us out there in Washington DC. It's a great opportunity to have her out there. We appreciated her joining us out there at that trip. And, you know, on that trip, one of the things that I wanted to just clarify on, I know there was some concerns. And one of the things that we strive to do as a district is be as transparent as we can when it comes to taxpayers' dollars. And we're very judicious when we look at these conferences and we assess where we can stay, hotel rooms, food, lodging, and what have you. So the event was held at the Marriott in Pentagon City there, right outside of Washington DC. And when we went to book our rooms for the board and cabinet, they actually were sold out. And so we actually had to look at alternative lodging that was close by. And I have to congratulate our staff because they were able to find another hotel that was very close. Now, the name of the hotel, you might say, wow, it's the Ritz Carlton. However, the room rates per night were $258 a night. The room rates for the Marriott were $249. So a difference of $9 more, although we couldn't stay where the hotel was that the event was being held at. I just wanted to clarify for everyone out there that we do take it seriously, the amount of money that we spend on our trips, and we are looking for the best deals always. And though, yes, it was called the Ritz Carlton, we did only spend $9 more per night, per person at that hotel, which is the next closest venue to the Marriott where the event was held. So I want to just clarify that. I know there were some concerns out there in the community about where we were staying at the time, but it was a great opportunity again to be close to where the venue was, but also save taxpayer dollars by not spending a lot of money on a hotel that was far away or exorbitant price room. So just wanted to put that out there this evening. Again, we appreciate the ability to go on our trip to DC with the staff. Next, I just want to briefly touch on one of the things is we wind down our summer school and we look towards the next year. We are laser focused on academic achievement. It's one of the things that we have always been focused on. And I know I have to thank Dr. Dwyson and her team because we have been assessing the Common Core state standards, where our CASP scores are in math and ELA. And we're really looking at drilling down into where at the district level, at the school site level, at the grade level, where can we intervene with our students? Where do they need the most help? We're looking at demographics as well to see what categories that we can do to help them in their math and ELA. And so one of the things that as we enter the next school year, the 2324 school year, which basically starts at the end of this week, July 1, starts our new school year, we are looking forward to really having those conversations about the data and how we can improve our student outcomes across the board, across all grade levels, K through 8 in our district. So we're excited about that. On the agenda this evening, you might see several things that I'm excited that Dr. Dwyson and her team bring to our school sites and our principals as well, such as M-Class Dibble. So one of the things it is, is it's a screen tool that's on there this evening. Many of you have heard of it. It's a, it's, it really helps us to assess letter naming fluency, nonsense words, word reading abilities like that. And so you'll see a lot of that on our agendas under our consent agenda. Not only that, but different academic programs that we're really looking at and trying to implement. And if they're not working, one of the things that we're also doing is saying, what does the data tell us? Are these programs being effective in the classroom before we just keep renewing them every year? So I want to thank Dr. Dwyson, all the principals, their teams at their school sites for constantly assessing the outcomes of our students on these academic testing services that we use or the programs that we use to help with interventions. And so again, as we look forward to the next school year, just know that we don't just implement something for the sake of implementing it, but it's really laser focused on, is it going to help our students achieve better test scores on the CASP testing? Is it going to achieve them, help them achieve academically in the math and ELA? And are they going to read better? Because at the end of the day, reading is our number one priority. If students can't read, they can't understand math problems, they can't understand the curriculum. So we are laser focused, starting from TK, which we're excited to be implementing a heavy duty TK program, starting in the fall as well. So with that, I appreciate your time, and I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Dwyson for update on academic services.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. So good evening, Board of Trustees and AEST staff and community. I want to thank our administrators, teachers, and support staff for a great summer school experience for our students in the Adelanto community and our academic services team and leaders for all of the prep and behind the scenes action. Over the next few days, I will be visiting our campuses again, and I look forward to those visits as we close out our extended year. I again want to extend a congra- another congratulations to our Melva Davis team for their hard work, and it was such an honor to witness their presentation on the Schools to Watch program and also to be recognized for their hard work. So we do stand behind them, and it was an honor to see that and be there with them. I'd also like to take a few minutes to talk about, I know at the board, last board meeting, there were concerns regarding that TK para position. And so I just want to take a few minutes to kind of highlight one of the concerns that were was about the student, the aide being required to work in the office. So I just want to say that legally, this this position was put in place. We have to maintain a 12 to one ratio in that classroom. And so it's important that in those job descriptions that some of those job descriptions are flexible, like if you need to go home and call a student's parent to come home for a student to go home, get my words mixed up, that they have that flexibility to do that, to help out and support. And so also, if anyone has ever worked, I actually began my career in early childhood classes, but assisting in toileting, we have accidents all the time. And so to be able to make sure that a student gets to the office, to be able to change their attire, help with buckling, or things like of that nature is very important. So I just wanted to address those because I know that there were a couple concerns. We are really looking forward to making sure we start off the year with our TK paras. They're going to be such a huge impact for our program and making sure that we impact the lives of our TK students from the beginning, early on. That's very important that we touch them early. Tonight, we will have our LCAP presentation and annual update, and I'll be presenting that alongside with Dr. Ochoa. I want to thank all of our stakeholders for voices and input into the LCAP document that is before you this evening. And then this coming year, Academic Services is going to focus on those additional supports for all students, looking at it through a multi-tiered system of approach. What are we doing for each student? How are we giving each student what they need to help make sure that they're successful? This means looking at lesson design, assessments that we administer, and progress monitoring them. What do we want our students to walk away with when they leave us? So we're getting ready and gearing up for the 2324 school year. And with that, that concludes comments for Academic Services. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Dr. Dwyson. Mr. Moran.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Clerk, trustee Webster, trustees, Mr. Kraus, Cabinet staff, students, and community members. Let me start off with our certificated side. I'd like to thank our staff and administrators for assisting with interviews for teachers. There were, with the last, since the last several months, there's been 69 individual interviews for teaching positions. There are five more taking place this week. We are continuing to, we're continuing with all new hires to ensure that they're welcome into the ASD family and prepared for the first day of school. We had staff who joined a collaborative conversation with Dr. Christie Pruitt, who's the dean of the California School of Education at Alliance University, and Dr. Tatiana Riva De Nera, I didn't mess that name up too much, Program Director for Teacher Education Programs. So staff learned how Alliance supports teacher candidates, how to grow our teacher pipeline, and the pathway to a teaching grant. We're working together to explore options to help grow our teacher candidate pool and cultivate our valuable partnership. On the classified side, staff and administrators have interviewed approximately 59 people over the last, over three days to develop our eligibility list in anticipation of open vacancies. As of July 1, 2023, we're, we will continue to accept applications for volunteers for the 2324 school year. So parents and community members, if you are choosing to volunteer at our schools, please look for that information, which can be found on our website. And we're currently, again, also accepting applications and join for all classified substitute positions. On the risk management and benefit side, we have open enrollment for health benefits that concluded on June 2. We had great participation from staff. Risk Management, which is led by Melanie Olson Savala, will be offering a CPR class during summer break for all employees. An email with the details will be sent out soon to all district employees. Also, I'd like to congratulate Melva Davis as well for their student, Schools to Watch program. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend Washington DC. However, I did attend when they got the award up in Monterey. So again, congratulations to Melva Davis staff and their accomplishment. And lastly, I'd like to introduce, she's not here, but at least introduce and welcome a new HR staff member of ours, Yvette Ramos, who recently joined us last week while I was on vacation. So she started last week, Tuesday, and she was an internal hire. She actually worked in the CNS department. So if you had a chance later this week, hopefully some of you could come by and meet Yvette Ramos. And this concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
All right. Thank you, Cabinet, for all of those updates. Moving on to 4.01 Academic Services, I, our LCAP presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, members of the board and community. This evening, I'd like to call up Dr. Dwyson and Dr. Ochoa, who will be presenting our Local Control and Accountability Plan update. Every June, we have to bring this before the board and the community and have it approved potentially, and then it goes to the county for review. But throughout the year, there's a lot of feedback that's given, as you'll hear from Dr. Dwyson and Dr. Ochoa, on all of the feedback we receive throughout the year in our LCAP meetings, and I really appreciate all the hard work they put into it. And so with that, it looks like Mr. Sinatra has it up, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dwyson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. So good evening again to our board members, Superintendent Kraus, Cabinet, AEST staff and community. So tonight, we are proud to present our annual update to our Local Control and Accountability Plan Annual Update. Presenting with this with me this evening is our new Director of State and Federal Programs. This is Dr. Diana Ochoa. And so she oversees all of our state and federal programs, anything that has to do with grants, reports, the monies that we get to support our students. She helps us to oversee that. So we are very happy to have her, and I look forward to you hearing from her this evening. So this evening, this is just an overview. Actually, let me go back one. There we go. These are our objectives this evening is just to provide this annual update. We want to take time to also reflect on the successes that we've had this past year. We want to provide you with an update, update on the implementation for the whole plan. Remember, this is a three-year plan. This is from '21 to '24. So we're at the end of our second year. We want to also provide next steps based on community feedback. So our overview, the Local Control and Accountability Plan is a three-year plan that describes all of our goals, activities, services, and expenses to support our student outcomes in alignment with our state and local priorities. The LCAP is an opportunity for us. What's really great about the LCAP, it allows us to tell our story. So these goals represent who we are and what we need for our students in our community. The funds detailed in the LCAP are specifically intended to support improving outcomes for students who are English learners, our foster youth, and also our low-income students. So we have three major LCAP goals within the LCAP, and everything in the LCAP is written around these three goals. So the first is student academic achievement, and we did hear from Mr. Kraus tonight, how we really want to make sure that we're drilling down to meet the needs of our students, so that on state tests or any types of measures that our students are competitive when they go out there in the world. The second one has to do with a student's social, emotional, mental, physical supports. That's huge. We're talking about trauma, counseling, those extra things that our students need that are so important. And then our final goal has to do with our parent, family, and community engagement. So the LCAP goals and activities for foster youth, English learners, and low-income students. And then our sites were also allocated additional monies to help support these goals as well. So you have district, and then it filters down to the site level. As previously stated, our Local Control and Accountability Plan is written for a three-year span. The three-year LCAP was originally developed during the 2122 school year, and we are currently at the end of our year two of our three-year cycle. The state requirements include annual updates speaking to the progress made towards its goals. If deemed necessary, we may make changes to reflect improvements. The LCAP data analysis was primarily based on student achievement data from the 2022 California School Dashboard. As we explored the California School Dashboard for 2022, the reflections highlighted our district successes. During the 2019 school year, the district increased in the area of ELA and mathematics. As we continued our data analysis cycle, we celebrate the English learner student group. Our EL students rose to the occasion, showing increases of 3.02 and 0.45% in ELA and mathematics. Also increasing the percentage of fours on the ALPAK assessment from 4% to 10.66%. And as a result, you may also see an increase in our reclassification rates from 1.3% to 17%. Bravo. Next. We were also fortunate to meet all local indicators of basics, teachers, instructional materials, facilities, parent and family engagement, and local climate surveys. So. So specifically, we wanted to make sure to highlight, we had schools that when they do annual testing, they they often identify, they may identify a school as needing comprehensive support and improvement or a CSI school. So over this past year, we're very, very happy and proud to announce that three of our schools have exited that. So we have Donald Braddock, El Mirage, and Westside Park, and we are very proud of them under the leadership of Principal Valenzuela, Principal Dr. Ward, and Principal Pantoja. So we thank all of their staff for their hard work. So this next slide talks about feedback, and we continuously strive to engage our parents. Last year, which we'll go over in the next few slides, we specifically were implemented a new way to engage and get parent feedback. So we started monthly community stakeholder meetings or LCAP meetings. And so monthly, you'll see this kind of timeline right before you. So monthly, we have our sites engaged. So parents and sites engaged, they determine their needs. So they have school site council, they have PTA, they have coffee with the principal, they also have staff meetings. All of that input and all of that feedback also goes into the LCAP. September through June, we collect feedback through multiple venues to include digital surveys. And then from September to June, again, we have our stakeholder input. So as from the district level, we instituted three different community stakeholder meetings. So we have our LCAP meetings, we have our district English learner advisory committee or DILAC, and then we have our district advisory committee or DAC. On June, this past board meeting, June 14, we had a public hearing for the LCAP. Tonight, we are, we are very hopeful for board approval and adoption of the LCAP, so that we make our yearly timeline and making sure that we submit to the county on time for the 2324 school year by July 1. This is just a quick demonstration showing all the different locations and meetings we've held this year and all the topics specifically to LCAP. And then from the feedback that was gathered, we had some very emerging themes. So I'm not going to go over them, but the biggest one that came out glaringly was tutoring, making sure that we're helping and supporting. Time and time again, parents are looking for ways and resources to support their students. Professional development, our teachers are asking, they need, in order to make sure that they're teaching the standards correctly, having opportunities in order to properly making sure that they're breaking that standard down correctly. So professional development came high on the list. Several other ones, social emotional learning, counselors, but all of these were the top emerging themes from the years worth of feedback. So the updates to our current plan. So what's new? So a lot of times, if you lay those two LCAP side by side, you're like, what's, what's different or what's updated? So what's updated and what's different? So there's currently reflection and successes. So kind of that slide that we went over, there's background information and highlights updated to reflect the goals and the actions for the upcoming year. We have our CSI section was updated to reflect the support that we're going to give to our CSI schools during 2223, including SIPSA development. We're going to engage our educational partners section, and was updated to reflect our 2223 meetings, so showing that we tried a different way and continue to. Summary of educational partner feedback, goal analysis sections to include challenges and successes, and budgeting information was added and updated to reflect our current amounts for this year. So we're going to go over really quickly the LCAP goals, and Dr. Ochoa is going to talk more specifically about the allotments that were designated to them. So remember, we have three LCAP goals. The first one has to do with student achievement. So student achievement could be any of those activities that are listed, anything and everything to do with a student grasping the standards in the core content areas. So with that, I'm going to ask Dr. Ochoa to speak specifically about the allotments. So as we're taking a look at the 2124 Goal One LCAP actions, some of the largest investments include class size reduction, supplemental technology, electives, and professional development development totaling $20 million for this specific goal. Our primary concern has been professional development, because that has been a huge ask from our teachers as well as our parents who have been surveyed. And so you will see professional development as one of the highest allotments. Goal two. Goal two has to do with student supports. So this is the social, emotional, the behavioral, the physical, the mental, all those extras to help a student, like I consider it wrapping our arms around a student to help them to be successful. So different activities include social emotional learning, our social workers, our counselors. And so I'm going to let Dr. Ochoa speak to this one. This one is very close to my heart. Within Goal Two, our efforts are to increase students' attendance rates. In doing so, we are emphasizing
In doing so, we are emphasizing the needs of the whole child, addressing their social, emotional, physical, and mental health. We understand the need to promote positive behavior intervention supports that include providing training for all sites, administrators, team members, counselors, and social workers. This united effort addresses the social, emotional well-being of our students. 2.6 social, emotional learning at $7 million has been one of the highest priorities.
And then our final goal is under parent, family, and community engagement. How are we working to make sure our parents are informed, engaged, and also empowered as partners with the Adelanto Elementary School District? Dr. Ochoa?
As emphasized throughout the year, we listened attentively to our community stakeholders and developed supportive efforts of family engagement, activities, communication, and bilingual support. We understand the value of listening to our community to address the needs of our families as we provide trainings, events, primary language communication, and bilingual support.
So our next steps from here, we're going to continue to implement our LCAP actions and services with fidelity, continue to work toward our goals. We're going to provide opportunities for the community to engage in decision-making in a variety of ways. Could be virtual, in-person, paper, standing outside, a variety of ways. We're going to hold LCAP input sessions throughout the year, again, in the district. And we're going to keep the community informed about opportunities to participate throughout the school year as well. So with that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, do we have any comments or questions? We'll start with Ben.
I would like to thank, thank you for your presentation, and I do appreciate the breakdown. Because you know, that LCAP thing is like so thick. I really have no quick questions that I can think of at this time, but if some will come up, I will make sure to contact you. Thanks. Thank you.
Very nice. Trustee Soto?
Excellent presentation. I am really impressed with how much we're investing in class size reduction. I think that's a big issue right now, and I'm glad that we're focused on that. Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Trustee Turner, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Again, thank you, Dr. DeWaison and Dr. Ochoa for your presentation. I know that this time of year, our LCAP is a major accomplishment based on all the support and all the steps that's taken throughout the year. I'm happy to hear that we had some REEL students exiting. And I'm happy to hear that, and I'm looking forward to more students exiting program improvement. Also, our parents and family engagement. I'm also happy to hear that more parents are involved in our LCAP, and hearing from them is very important, because that's one of the things that the local, the LCAP and the local control ability is to include our parents in our community and developing our budget and developing our plans for our students to achieve. One of the things that I'm concerned about is, you mentioned closing the achievement gap, and we've been hearing that for a very long time. Specifically for our foster youth and African-American students, could you elaborate a little bit more on some of the ways that you plan to address those issues? In the LCAP?
Sure, that's a great question. So really, that comes down to a couple ways, is making sure that we are, I alluded to that a little earlier in the comments, but I thank you for bringing that out here. It's really looking at our structures that we have when you look at multi-tiered systems of support. What is every student getting to, in order to be successful? So one of the ways is, first of all, are our lessons designed to teach the standard as a whole? We want to make sure that we're digging down deep into what the standard says, because when students are assessed, they're assessed on that standard in its entirety. The other way is that we have to make sure that we're investing in assessments that will help tell us early if students are needing help and needing support. Additionally, you have, what I like about our LCAP is that it hits academic, but we also can't hit academic without the parent, and we can't hit academic without the social, emotional. So what I love about that, I consider our LCAP to kind of like be a triangle, because without, with one of those removed, it's going to be very hard to be successful. And so what I love is that the LCAP as a whole, because when you talk about meeting the needs of our fosters and our African-American students, they might have differentiated needs. So when you talk about meeting their needs academically, we can hit academic, but we also have to make sure that we're hitting them in the heart and that we're hitting them and wrapping our arms around them, really giving them what they need. Progress monitoring, assessing, intervening early, and then what are we going to do about it? What's that plan of action? What's the communication look like? So those are our some, but it really involves, that's our focus next year, is helping our administrators in our schools develop strong, multi-tiered systems of support to make sure that all student, no student, is left behind.
Thank you for that, Dr. DeWaison. I know that we had talked about that, and you know, I'm so happy that we're on the bypath to finally attack, you know, our achievement gaps and the plans that you have in place with our LCAP. I'm really, I'm really excited. Especially to hear about our positive behavior, social, emotional learning, you know, during the pandemic. You know, our kids came back, not only our children, you know, our whole community, our teachers, parents, you know, and they can really benefit from that, and also class size reduction. That's a, that's a major issue with our, with our teachers and our students, because it really make a difference. You know, if you're packing classes with students and not support, then, you know, it get difficult to accomplish many of our goals that we tend to accomplish. So with that being said, thank you for your presentation. I'm really happy and really satisfied with the presentation and the meetings that you've completed throughout the year. And I know that it's been a challenge in some ways, so we have to get our parents out. Parents, we need you. If you have, if there's any parents in the audience, we need you to participate in establishing our LCAP and get more involved in what we do here at our district. So thank you so much. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Turner. I do want to extend gratitude as well. Thank you, Dr. DeWaison and Dr. Ochoa for giving us this lovely presentation. I do want to comment that reading this year's LCAP was phenomenal. I was really appreciative of the amount of detail that was put into it and the bulkiness of the document itself. So thank you, ladies, very much, and thank you for your presentation.
Alrighty, going on to closed session declarations, we will be taking items 5.02 through 5.06 into closed session. Public testimony before closed session. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only must complete and submit AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Public comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although the Board of Trustees cannot take action or discuss items, not on the agenda, the Board of Trustees listens carefully and appreciates input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session item. The board limits the total time for public comment or public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional persons speak only if they have something new to add. Alrighty, 6.02. Mr. Kraus, do we have an ADTA representative?
Yes, Madam Clerk, we'd like to welcome Jennifer Rader to the podium, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to Dr. DeWaison and Dr. Ochoa for the wonderful LCAP update that was really helpful. Actually, I like this order of agenda, because a lot of my speech is eliminated. As questions get answered, it's wonderful. It's working out really well. Okay. Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Mr. Kraus, cabinet members, and district stakeholders in the audience who are listening on Zoom. Goodness, it's the middle of summer, and there's still so much going on. Summer school is winding down, and I think all of the students had a wonderful experience, thanks to a lot of people working together. Many thanks again to Carol Coburn, and Dr. DeWaison, all the teachers and classified staff, secretaries, clerks, principals, and custodians, all the many people it takes to run even a temporary, short-term school experience. Well, the CASP test results are in. I'm working summer school with a teacher who follows such things very closely. And perhaps the principal informed you already. I hope so, but Mona Senna's fourth-grade class at Gus Franklin scored 73% proficient in language arts. That is an incredible score, and I hear all of the fourth graders there experienced growth. Her class also had 52% proficient in mathematics, which is a very, very huge score, very, very big growth. Kudos to Mrs. Senna and the rest of the fourth-grade team at Gus. I wish I had results for the whole district. I'm sure there was growth in different areas, but we need to celebrate those that we find out about as soon as we do, so I wanted to let you know. Very, very happy about Melva Davis being honored as a school to watch. That was exciting. And looking through my notes here. Would have been nice if everyone could have stayed at the same hotel, that team event, sort of a, sort of a building, team-building experience. Adelanto is a very humble district, one of the poorest in the state. And this kind of goes into my comments that I spoke last, last time about in terms of the conferences and upping the conference amount to 15,000 per person. It just sometimes looks like the leadership treats themselves to Beverly Hills standards when we are one of the poorest districts in the state. And it's upsetting to watch, and it can be mortifying to the people we serve. We have a high percentage of foster kids. Our population is so disadvantaged socio-economically. And sometimes it's pretty poor optics to have our leaders metaphorically dining on steak and lobster while the people go hungry. But, and I appreciate that the Ritz-Carlton sounds fancy, and it was good that the amount you paid per room night was not $500 per room. But I am really glad that Mr. Kraus was able to explain that, because it does, it does make a difference. It matters what people are watching. It matters what people are seeing. So on to other topics about the LCAP annual update. Thank you. And thanks to the divisions of teachers, I'm seeing a bit of a gap in one of the areas of the, of the plan. On page 12, tutoring was a top theme. I think I heard Dr. DeWaison mention it as a top theme. But when we look to corresponding actions on 15, there's no mention of tutoring. But what I'd like to say is that we need a much more intensive approach to the literacy problem we're facing. A few teachers doing two to three hours a week after school for those few students who are able to participate will not be nearly enough. We desperately need a reading specialist position at each and every school, someone who can pull out small groups of students to remediate reading basics, beginning with phonics instruction. Even better would be a paraprofessional in each classroom, K through 2, during language large time, to assist with activities while the credential teacher is able to work with small groups. Ask any teacher what is most necessary to teaching reading, and the answer will be small group instruction. In any given class, the reading levels range from at least two grade levels below the, the, the class level, the grade level, to sometimes a couple of grade levels higher. One, maybe two kids might be above grade level. But typically, it's very, very heavy and it's below grade level. My classes that come into me in third grade, for example, for me, most of them are somewhere in the first grade level of reading, and I have them in third grade, trying to get them and push them to fourth grade level. So I might have a reader, one or two readers in the fourth grade level, in third grade, but anyway, the, the balance is much disparate for the, for the lower readers. Two things that come to mind when I consider this. One, the students on the high end of the spectrum are basically abandoned to work on their own, just because they have reading skills. This isn't fair. They too deserve an education that pushes and motivates and encourages them to do more and better. But leaving that aside, the second thing is, how do we keep all the class engaged and busy while we work with the students needing most help? When 95% of our classes are not anywhere near independent? And the answer is, we need an extra adult, another pair of eyes, another pair of hands to monitor and assist, at least during a period of the day where the teacher can work with small groups. The nice thing about learning centers is that even the high group of readers get their turn with the teacher, and that is when they get instruction that they need on their level. And it's not considered enrichment. It's not, it's not extra. It's not special. It's their due. It's what they need educationally. Without the opportunity for small group instruction, it's nearly impossible to differentiate as much as we need to with our diverse population. I do see in the LCAP action plan that the number one priority is class size reduction, which simply will not occur without hiring more teachers. Thankfully, our salary scale is much more competitive in this era of teacher shortage, but the next step we should be taking is getting out in front with job fairs. We need to schedule far in advance of the other area districts. Otherwise, they pick up the best candidates first. We also can't rest on our laurels. We need to continue to compete with the other districts as their salary scales increase so must ours. This district tends to take care of this issue once, and then neglect it for a few years until it reaches a crisis point. Please, let's not continue that trend. It's reactive programming, and it does not benefit our district. With our target population, we cannot slip down to last place in the desert again. On a related matter, we are still losing some teachers to other districts, and one reason is the lack of respect shown to teachers by students. It is incomprehensible to me that a teacher, I'm sorry, that a student can look a teacher in the eye and tell them to, pardon me, F off with impunity. And yet that is exactly what is happening, happening, occurring all day, every day in our middle schools, and sometimes in the lower grades as well. We can't help what kind of home environment these kids come from, but we can insist on the barest of minimum respect, and that is that an adult will not be openly cursed. This is 100% verbal abuse and should not be tolerated. The result of this must be an immediate suspension. It may take a minute for the students to realize that we mean business, and there may be an uptick in suspensions at first, but we need to rein this problem in. We will never have the district of excellence that we all desire until we nail down this piece. It all begins with respect. Our parent choice schools, George, Melva Davis, Gus, have less of that problem than anywhere else, and it's because those parents also do not want their children exposed to that kind of language and disruption. So they choose the better option. We owe it to our students to create that kind of environment at every school. There are students who come to school to learn, who sit and listen and behave themselves, and they are terrorized by the kids who disrupt and disrespect. And furthermore, they end up ignored as the teacher's attention is consumed by these other students. This is not fair. We need a school board that stands up for, to support the students who are negatively affected by this horrible behavior. I don't call these kids influencers. An influencer is someone who encourages and motivates. To call these children influencers is to pay them a compliment they don't deserve. Here's another thing that was brought to my attention, just as a, by the way. Gus Franklin has never, ever had a music or art program. The teachers do what teachers have always done, teach and sing songs as time permits, but this isn't fair. We need to do better. I know there's more to discuss, but I will close my remarks with this. I know there's more to discuss, but I will close my remarks with this. At the last board meeting, you assigned a task force to review all board policies and make sure they're updated and current, nothing obsolete. We very much look forward to seeing that review of your policies, make sure they're all in alignment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kraus, do we have a representative from CSEA?
Yes, Madam Clerk, we do. We'd like to welcome Diane Lin to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Clerk, Webster, trustees, superintendent Kraus, cabinet, classified staff, certificated staff, and all others in attendance, and those of you on Zoom as well. I'm here to speak about a concern I had with the tabling of the MOU for our TK job description. I wanted to give you some insight on how we arrived at the job description. We decided to have a negotiations committee come forward, and they did the research for us. We not only had our own existing para description on hand. Our committee went through, and they went to other districts to find out what their job descriptions were as well. And that's how we arrived. It was a lot of work put into it. I'm hoping that this MOU gets approved, this go-around. Otherwise, we're gonna, not gonna be able to get the cream of the crop for our paras, and we all know it's statewide that we are having these TK positions. So I was happy to hear Mr. Moran say that we are going through with getting all of our jobs. You know, we have a lot of open positions, getting them filled. So I'm really happy to hear that. It puts a stress and extra load on the ones who are here every day trying to get things done with not enough help. I know Kim Vigliano was part of that committee, and so I know she has a lot of things to say regarding that job. I wouldn't be able to do that as I have never been a para. So I want to thank you, and also I want to emphasize one more time, probably hear me more often regarding this situation. But we really do need a job description compensation study. I have been on the negotiations team. This is gonna be my third successor, so it's going to be at the end of 24, it'll be nine years. For five years, we've been asking for this study, and it has not come to pass. We have not had a classification study since 2008. And I don't think I have to go back and let you know what's changed. And since 2008, a lot have, has changed. And I know you remember hearing some of the, our, our classified staff speak about that at our April meeting. So thank you for listening and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Kraus, do we have any audi- audience members at this time?
Madam Clerk, not for closed session at this time. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I do apologize. Thank you, Xenia. Ms. Melva Davis had requested, if it pleases the consensus of the board, to allow her to speak in during the closed session public comment since it's late in the evening on her trip to DC. If it's all right with Madam Clerk and the rest of the board.
Board, are we okay with this?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Then we would like to welcome Ms. Melva Davis to the, I believe she's on Zoom, Mr. Sinatra?
She is. I'm asking them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm trying my best to start the video, but it's probably better that you don't see me because I'm tired. And it's showing on my face. But anyway, to the Board of Trustees, to our chair, to our clerk, the Board of Trustees, to the fellow trustees, to our superintendent, assistant superintendents, to our directors, all staff, classified, certificated. I don't think we have any other qual- qualifications. I think I hit everybody. To all of our parents and other audience and guest members. First of all, I wanted to say I am more than humbled. I am so very humbled and excited to be able to say that I was a part of the team who was able to attend the National Schools to Watch Conference in Washington, DC. It was awesome. Oh my goodness. I had so much fun being in the company of the representatives for AESD. I could have jumped around as if I had had lots of sweet popcorn. Just all it takes is a little caramel popcorn. I didn't need it. I wasn't such a high. It was a beautiful affair. We started out, began with Erin Gruel, who wrote with her students, high school students, 150 of them. They wrote what's called Freedom Writers. They called themselves that, as homage to the Freedom Writers of the Civil Rights Movement, where children in high school, many of them were not able to read and learn to read and write with pride as they graduated and marched across that stage, which people had given up hope. They were from the poorest school and some of the most, I guess you'd say, dangerous school settings. And yet, these children strived. And so we were able to see all kinds of excerpts and hear and learn of their successes and their trials. So that was really a bang start for us. And then following that, we had Melva Davis, staff members representing the AESD in style. They were stellar in their presentation, and it went so smooth that you wanted more. It was just one staff member after the other, after the other. And there was no break where they had to stop and say, oh, are you next? Or am I next? It was a very smooth presentation, very well organized, as if it had been rehearsed over and over again. They were very polished. So naturally, we were beaming when we left that. And then following that, there were a myriad of other workshops that were available. And we learned so much because there were so many to choose from. It was difficult, and I cheated. I went to one workshop for 30 minutes and left and went to the other one so I could get two in in an hour, just because I wanted to make sure I got five or six in a day. So I did that only twice. Typical child, right? But the workshops addressed self. The workshops addressed innovation. The workshops addressed equity. And also, they were innovative in making sure that they included every child. As I heard Jennifer Rader say earlier, hi Jen, that we take children where they are, we meet them there, and then we expose, we develop, we help them to grow. And that's what education is all about. That was great. Then there was another workshop, creating belonging for all students with equity and empowerment, making sure we recognize every single child and that we validate them, we value them, and that every child, whether they are a SPAD, whether they, whatever the subgroup they fell in, we, as the educators, made certain that they were equal partners and treated that way within our perimeter of teaching. The contin- the, the conference continued to offer, do this, not that. And that was a workshop on teaching adolescents how to read and incorporating science in their reading to bring their grades up. And then we had Mr. Reed, who was so much fun, a keynote speaker. I would have loved to have been in his fourth boy, fourth grade class, and I probably would have been on his list for the most unbehaved, undisciplined, wild child in his classroom. But his was basically helping children to understand that they are already empowered and valuing who they are and allowing them to create in his classroom. And that was great. And then there was another one on Selvett that, instead, when we speak to children, instead of I will do something, and we affirm them, we instead say, you are. You are wonderful. You are beautiful. And they must pass that affirmation on to another student. That was so cool. I didn't win, but I got a chance to play with a light-up ball that lit up in my hand. They had to pass it to the next person. So you had to say, you're strong. But every single person, and that's what we have to do sometimes with our children because they come to school and they've been beaten down. And in our classrooms, we have a way. The bus driver, CNS, the custodial staff, the groundspeople, the clerk, the secretary, the teacher, the neighboring teacher, the psychologist, the counselor. Whomever's on our campus as an adult has the responsibility to validate and affirm every single child. So I thank you for allowing me to go. I so enjoyed it. It was so much fun, even though it rained every single day that we were there. We had a blast, and we learned a great deal, and we learned to appreciate each other more than probably we had done so in the past. So from the depths of my heart, I thank each of you. I am so proud to be a part of AESD's team, always and forever, whether it's ACRAC, whether it's attending, reading to a child, whether it's walking a campus, just being able to be involved with our students and our community is very special, and we shine. Tiny little out of Atlanta, shine. So thank you. And that last words, out of all of the middle schools who were honored across the nation, there were only five middle schools in San Bernardino County who were recognized by the National Schools to Watch. Melva Davis Academy was one of those. So my hat's off to the educators, to the Board of Trustees, to all of those of us who educate, because we're all teachers, whether we like it or not sometimes. Thank you. I am so humbled. Thank you. Blessings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to recess for closed session. Trustees, can I get a motion to recess to close?
I'll second that motion.
All right, Turner takes the first, Soto takes the second. Ms. Leve, can you please call for the vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Motion passes for zero. The time now is 6:32, and we are closed. Thank you very much. Alrighty, AESD, we are going to take a recess from closed session at this time. We're gonna reconvene to open session at 7:46. Madam Leve, could I please get a roll call?
Trustee Soto.
Soto here.
Trustee Webster.
Webster here.
Trustee Turner.
Turner present.
Trustee Benz.
Benz pres- present.
Alrighty, closed session report. The board will reconvene to closed session. Report will be made at that time. Number 10, public testimony. Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Sinatra, do you see anyone from ADTA raising their hand on Zoom?
I do not see anybody on Zoom, no.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sinatra, do we have anybody from CSEA that's raising their hand on Zoom?
I do not see anyone from CSEA. I have a Tadios. Is that a representative?
Yes, I was getting to that. He had put in for, he was my next person. So if we'd like to welcome Mr. Tadios Belay to the public speaking forum.
I'm asking them to unmute now.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Michael Kraus. So I'm gonna turn on my video. Hello, thank you so much for this opportunity. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Michael Kraus, and community members. My name is Dr. Tadius Belay. I'm the president and CEO of US African Institute. It's an international academy organization dedicated to advancing educational equity for historically underrepresented students across the United States and African countries. I'm also a member of the Board of Tail and High Desert Academy in Victorville, California. I would like to take this moment to express my deepest gratitude for Superintendent Michael Kraus for attending a recent graduation ceremony in Victorville, California. Your presence was a significant source of inspiration for our students, teachers, and the, and the entire community. Seeing you there not only made the event more memorable, but also instilled in us a sense of pride and reassurance, knowing that we are under the guidance of such an esteemed and humble leader. Your leadership and guidance have made a profound impact on our school district and our students. Your community-oriented and servant leadership approach has been instrumental in nurturing an environment that supports the growth and development of every student, teacher, and the stakeholders involved. We're humbled by your continued support for Tail and High Desert Academy and profoundly grateful for your unwavering commitment to the success of our student. Your leadership still is one we deeply admire as it has consistently put the needs of our students in the broader community at the forefront. Once again, thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to join us on such an important day for our graduating students. We look forward to continuing to work together in fostering an inclusive and enriching learning environment for our students with sincere appreciation and gratitude. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kraus, do we have any additional audience members wishing to speak tonight?
Yes, Madam Clerk, we do have Ms. Kim Vigliano. Mr. Sinatra, do you see her in the Zoom room?
I do. I'm asking them to unmute now.
Great, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, administration, certificated, and classified staff, and all others joining us tonight. My name is Kim Vigliano. I have been a paraprofessional for the past 16 years and have worked at all levels in special education from RSP to SDC classes. I am here to support the approval of the kindergarten TK assistant job position. I was one of several CSEA classified staff that meant to discuss the job description and what it entails and to make sure that it met the requirements that the state of California set forth. As a paraprofessional, we are sometimes required to assist our students with the restroom needs. This can be in the form of making sure they use the restroom, flush the toilet, wash their hands, to helping them button their jeans or helping them adjust their belts. We do, in many instances, have students who do require full assistance and do require their diapers be changed. We do have some female students who do require assistance during their menstrual cycle as well. I apologize for being so blunt with information, but do feel that is necessary for you to know what is required at times and that we all approach this in a respectful manner and do our part to ensure that the student's privacy is respected as well as making sure their needs are taken care of. It has been best practice to have two students, I'm sorry, it has been best practice- It has been best practice to have two students, I'm sorry, it has been best practice to have two adults with children when we are changing them or assisting them in the restroom. While at times this may be difficult, I feel this is important for us as educators and professionals to make sure that we have an extra set of eyes on each other in case there were to ever be a time when someone was accused of an inappropriate act with a child. Thankfully, this has never been an issue and all of us who work in the classes make sure we always remain professional for not only the safety of our students, but other, each other as well. I've heard some concerns that we are asking TK instructional assistants to change our students when in fact the intent was meant for those students who may have special needs and in TK. I have been told that with this job description, if the student has a bathroom accident, the student is to be taken to the nurse's office, parents will be called to take the student home or to change and clean them up at school so they may return to class. I ask that the district recognizes these concerns and that it is clearly discussed and stated what is being asked of those who may apply for this position. I also wanted to thank Dr. Doyzon for just acknowledging her concerns and I look forward to hopefully this being passed and we can get some TK pairs in our district. Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Kraus, do we have any additional speakers?
No, Madam Clerk, this concludes our public speaking request this evening.
Very nice. Proceeding on to eleven point oh one, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and the special board meeting minutes of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three?
Proceed, turn our motion to approve the minutes just stated.
And Benzai sec- second.
Madam Leve, may I please get a vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Motion passes four zero. Proceeding on to the consent agenda, today we are taking items twelve point oh two through twelve point six four with the the deletion of twelve point zero eight or the table of twelve point zero eight and the adjustment to twelve point five six. Trustees, may I get a motion? Or does trust, do I have any trustees who want to pull something?
Oh. I lost it. Hold on. I, we always do this.
Twelve point five six?
Yes, twelve point six.
Five six.
Five six. That one. Thank you.
Are there any additional items that wish to be pulled?
Madam Clerk, twelve point three one, please.
Trustee Benz? No, just that one.
Awesome. Alrighty. Okay. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of twelve point zero eight? The the adjustment to twelve point five six and the polled items of twelve point three one and twelve point five six as well?
Soto, a motion that we approve.
Benzai sec- second.
Madam Leve, may you please call for the vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, yes.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
See Benz.
Benz, I.
Motion passes four zero, moving on to thirteen point zero one. Trustees, I need a motion for twelve point three one.
Trustee Turner, motion to approve the remaining consent agenda.
Trustee Turner, this would be for items removed from the consent agenda and that's for point three one.
I motion that we have a discussion. I had a quick question.
Webster, I motion to approve with discussion.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. What are we doing? I thought we pulled those items and then we had to motion to approve the remaining consent agenda and then we go discuss those items that we pulled, right?
We did.
We just voted on that, trustee Turner.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, it's late where I am, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was.
Understandable.
Going to say it's late. You are, so it's okay. Yeah.
Yeah, trustees, can I get a second?
Benzai sec- second.
All right, trustees, we are now open for item twelve point three one for discussion.
I was just wondering how we can, do trustees attend these conferences when they have the workshops? Or how do we use those funds to benefit the district? Do we attend these conferences that they have, the Greater High Desert Chamber of Commerce? Or how are we benefiting from the nine hundred that we're spending?
Absolutely. Thank you for your question, trustee Soto. So the Greater High Desert Chamber of Commerce now incorporates all the cities in the high desert. They combine them together, including Adelanto, and we are always invited to go to, they have, every Friday, they have meetings that we are more than welcome to go to if time permits, time allows, where we network with other educators from other districts, other board members, other elected officials, business leaders from the community. We're able to, I like to bring business cards and other things of the district and hand them out to enhance our opportunities out there to partner with potential businesses, whether they're in Adelanto. We have schools in Victorville, so even in the high desert itself. And so, yes, they do have a lot of coffees, events that they have, network meetings they have. And then we also have the opportunity throughout the year to be invited to larger conferences that they have, which we, for an additional cost. But this gets us in their handbook as well, which lists all of the school districts and businesses that are in there. So it does get our name out there as well. We do also participate in a flyer program that allows us to put a flyer insert into their magazine that comes out quarterly and gives us an opportunity to showcase what a district's doing as well.
Thank you. I ask because that's a great opportunity for our district to really network and make some good connections outside the city and inside the city. So I was very interested to see what we can do as trustees to show up to those coffees and what are the steps to, to make sure that we're getting the most out of this membership?
Absolutely, trustee Soto, and I will have Ms. Leve make sure that we invite the board to all of these as we get them. There's so many, to be honest with you. So many opportunities, I can't attend them all, but perhaps at some point, the board, you know, when time allows, are able to represent our district at these events. That'd be a great opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
All right, do we have any more comment on twelve point three one? Hearing none. Madam Leve, can you call for the vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
See Benz.
Benz, I.
Motion passes four zero. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve twelve point five six?
Benz, I mo- motion to approve.
Webster, I second. We are open for discussion. Trustees, do we have any comments?
I like to pull these especially when they're here because I'm real, really excited so excited about the direction our school Columbia will go in. We really, I feel we are building, a strong team is being built and that our students and our staff will ben- benefit and that our school will grow. So I just, I like to pull it for the good news. So. And that's all.
Trustee Soto.
Yeah, I concur. I agree.
And I also, I also concur, you know, hearing that, you know, we're moving forward and that's what we want to always do, move forward. And I'm really excited, especially for the next school year and years to come with the addition to staff that we're including. And with this one, I'm really excited.
Thank you, and I do want to extend my gratitude for joining our A E S D team. I do look forward to it. Ms. Leve, can you call for the vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, yes.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
See Benz.
Benz, I.
Motion passes four zero. Welcome.
Welcome.
Is Mrs. Marquez in the audience? If she could stand and wave. Welcome aboard. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. All right, trustees, moving on to fourteen point zero one. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the job title change from clerk three confidential to confidential assistant and approval of the revision of the job description?
Soto, a motion that we approve.
Benzai sec- second.
Alrighty, we are now open for discussion. Do I have any trustees that have comment or question?
I just hope that we get the qualified, most qualified person for this role so that we can alleviate some stress for assistant superintendent.
Perfect. Madam Leve, can you please call for the vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, yes.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
See Benz.
Benz, I.
Motion passes four zero. Fourteen point oh two, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the adoption of the Local Control and Accountability Plan Annual Update for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
Trustee Turner, a motion to approve.
And Benzai sec- second.
Perfect. We are now open for discussion. Do I have any trustees that would like to make comment?
I would just like to thank Doc- Dr. Doyzon and her team for the great, great work on this L cap. I mean, the engagement, the meetings, it's just, it's ni- nice to know that it's being, you're staying on top, top of it and it just shows through, throughout how well, and I really think that we're gonna, we're gonna key, keep showing improvement. So thank, thank you very much.
Trustee Soto.
I concur. I appreciate the hard work that went into this and like I said earlier, great presentation.
And trustee Turner?
I also concur with my fellow trustees. Like I said, this is one of the best LCAP that I've seen in a number of years and congratulations to you, Dr. Doyzon, and your entire team. I know it was a lot of work put into this and I could see the fruition of it coming through for our students. So congratulations.
Once again, I am very thankful for all the effort and hard work that you and your team have put together into this document. It is so essential to our growth and then also our transparency. So I do thank you. It is probably one of my favorite documents I've read this year. So Madam Leve, with that being said, will you please call for the vote?
Yes, trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Benz.
Benz, I.
Motion passes four zero. Fourteen point oh three, trustees, can I get a motion to approve adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget? Can I get a motion?
Trustee Turner, motion to adopt the fiscal year budget of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Soto, I second that motion.
We are open for discussion. Trustees, do we have comment?
I have none.
Hearing none. Madam Leve, can you call for the vote?
Trustee Soto.
I.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
See Benz.
Benz, I.
Motion passes four zero. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the contract amendment for the superintendent reflecting a five percent on schedule salary increase as of July first, twenty twenty-three?
Benz, I move to approve the, this item.
Soto, I second that motion.
Trustees, we are now open for discussion.
I just, I'm sorry. I just want to thank Ms. Ms. Mr. Kraus for all, all the hard, hard work. I mean, read, 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 reading fro- frozen, I know must be mentally taxing. I'm just kidding. No, I just want to thank you for being out, out there, being approachable, being on top of things and keep keeping the board, you know, up to date on change, changes and things like, like that. I really do de- depend on your op- open commu- communicate, so thank, thank you.
Trustee Soto.
Thank you, madam clerk. I also agree. It's very clear what we have to do this. We are giving a raise to majority of classified staff. So I just want to also thank Mr. Kraus for your hard work, dedication out to the district, and I really do look forward seeing you grow with us. Thank you.
Trustee Turner?
I concur with my fellow trustees, but Mr. Kraus, you've been a warm welcome to our district. Our students love you. When we go to sites, they call your name. I know who you are. You know, and teachers acknowledge you and respect you and because you show that you care, you know, and I really appreciate that. I really appreciate the way you take care of your board, you know, and the respect that you give us and keep us informed on things that we need to know. And I really appreciate what you've done and what I know that you will continue to do. You're an asset to this district, so keep up the outstanding work. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to go on record and discuss for a moment the importance of making sure that we don't have salary compression within our district. It's my understanding that multiple positions got salary raises this year and this is just another way that I believe we as the board are trying to create the equity within our district. So. With that being said, Madam Leve, could you please call for the vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Motion passes four zero. Fourteen point zero five, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the contract amendment for the Assistant Superintendent of H R reflecting a four percent on schedule salary increase as of July first, twenty twenty-three, plus the five thousand off schedule payment for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year?
Benz, I mo- motion to approve.
Turner, I second.
We are now open for discussion. Trustees, do we have comment?
Well, just re- real quick, this also has to do with the comp- compression thing because it's just, that's the way this, the scale has worked. So. That's all.
Trustee Soto.
I agree, yeah.
Trustee Turner.
I agree with my fellow trustees. Yes, it's had to happen.
I concur as well. Madam Leve, may you please call the vote?
Trustee Soto.
I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Motion passes four zero. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the contract amendment for the Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services reflecting the four percent on schedule salary increase as of July first, twenty twenty-three, plus the five thousand off schedule payment for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year?
Benz, I mo- motion to.
Benz, I mo- motion to uh uh approve?
Trustee Turner, you can have it.
Turner, alright, seconded by Turner. We are now open for discussion. Trustees, do I have comment?
Just again, it's the de- de- com- compression, but also, you know, the the assist assistant su- superintendent, and they are held re- re- response responsible for their department and stuff, so. But, yeah. And they're ve- very well deserved.
Trustee Soto?
Yeah, besides uh having to approve with salary compression, you know, we're very grateful for the hard work that you also put into our district. Thank you, Dr. Dwyson.
Trustee Turner?
I I concur with my fellow trustees, and again, you know, Dr. Dwyson, you and your team uh are doing an amazing job, your hard work. You know, you listen to the board, you listen to your staff, and I want you to continue moving forward, which I know that you will, and it's and it's a pleasure and an honor to have you on board. So congratulations and keep up the good work.
And once again, I do concur with my fellow trustees, um at this time, Madame Leve, can you call for the vote?
Trustee Soto?
So do I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Motion passes four zero. Fourteen point zero seven, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
Trustee Turner, a motion to approve?
Benz, I sec- second?
Very nice, we are open for discussion. Trustees, do I have comment? Trustee Soto?
I have none, madam clerk, thank you.
Trustee Benz?
No, I have none.
And trustee Turner?
No comments.
Very nice. Um Madame Leve, can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Soto?
So do I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
See Benz?
Benz, I. Motion passes four zero. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding revision of the transitional kindergarten paraprofessional job description and change of salary placement?
Benz, I mo- motion to uh approve?
Webster, I second. We are open for discussion. Do I have any trustees who would like to make comment? Trustee Benz?
No, I just, you know, C- CSC, C- CSEA wants, wants their this up approved. They, you know, they've loo- looked at the lang- language, we've gone over, over it, and I feel with their sta- stamp of approval, there's no reas- reason why it should not be passed.
Very nice. Trustee se- trustee Soto?
I concur.
And trustee Turner?
I have no comments, thank you.
Um I will keep my comment short tonight. I do want to say thank you to all of the individuals that helped make this MOU possible and bringing it back. I do wanna say thank you to cabinet as well into looking into our concerns from the last board meeting and then also following up with those. At this time, Madame Leve, could you please call for the vote?
Trustee Soto?
So do I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
See Benz?
Benz, I. Motion passes four zero. Fourteen point oh nine, can I get a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding the elimination of the inclement weather day on the twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five teacher calendars?
Trustee Soto, a motion that we approve?
Webster, I second. We are now open for discussion. Trustees, do I have comment?
So this will, if we were to take a snow day in the future, this will el- elim- eliminate that little thing where we had to add an extra day onto the end of the year, is that right?
So what this does, if we have to uh submit a waiver J thirteen to the state to get reimbursed, we will not have to make up that day. Uh because it will not be on the calendar, and so that was the one requirement that the state uh sent down. That as long as it's not on a school calendar of any school district, then they would be able to approve the J thirteen waivers, uh and we would not have to make up a day.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Soto, do you have a comment?
Um I have none, thank you.
Trustee Webster, trustee Turner?
No comments, thank you.
Very nice. Alright, Ms. Leve, uh call for the vote, please.
Trustee Soto?
So do I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Motion passes four zero. At this time, we are going to reconvene closed session. Time is eight nineteen. Trustees, can I get a motion?
A motion that we we uh reconvene to closed session, madam clerk.
And Benz, I sec- sec- second?
Madame Leve, can you please call for the vote?
Trustee Soto?
So do I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Motion passes four zero, the time is now eight nineteen. See you shortly. Alrighty, we are reconvening um closed session, the time is eight thirty-eight. Madame Leve, can I get a roll call and quorum establishment?
Yes, trustee Soto?
So do here.
Trustee Webster?
Webster here.
Trustee Benz?
Benz here.
And trustee Turner left at eight thirty-four PM.
Thank you very much. Going on to closed session reports, the board has no reportable um items at this ti- or for this closed session. Moving on to fifteen point one, governing board members' reports and announcements. Trustee Benz, do you have any comments? Uh wait, nope, hang on. Trustees, I need a motion.
Uh Benz, I mo- motion?
Wait, we don't have the motion? Oh, it's just that it hasn't there.
You got us voting?
Weird, uh yeah, we don't have to vote, we can just.
Oh, yeah. Madame Z.
My apologies. I was like, that doesn't.
You're right. Alright, back to my original plan. Trustee Benz, do you have comments?
Uh real, really quick, I just want, wanna thank the uh team from Melv- Melva Dave, Dave Davis. They had a, just a hard time flying out to D- DC. I mean, the 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 del- delays, the re- re- directs. Then, I mean, it just, it wa- it was like that planes, trains and autom- automobile things for them, I I I think. But they still show, showed up, they still pre-present, stunted well. I, you know, I watched their parrot's presentation and it was just done so, so well, and I'm so thank, thank, thankful and great, grateful to to them for put, put, putting our dis- district in the spa spotlight, and I, it re- really gave me me a chance to know then Ms. Dave Davis, we just spent a ton, ton of time with her and I just wanna thank, thank them all, so, and that, I'm I'm just gonna keep my things short, that's short, yeah.
Thank you, trustee Soto?
I did wanna save my comments for the next uh meeting that we will be having. Um I'll be mentioning as well our trip to DC. But I did wanna quickly thank as well Melva Davis and her staff. I'm sorry, Melva Davis, uh the principal of Melva Davis and her staff for uh sticking through with the with the trip. I know it was very chaotic. And um I hope moving forward, it doesn't happen again. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. I will keep my comments brief as well. I do wanna make acknowledgement to our summer school participants, staff, students, etc. Thank you so much for supporting our amazing program. The enrichment program has been such a success as we are wrapping up the end of this week. I do wanna wish all those individuals a wonderful rest of your summer. I do wanna touch note on the Melva team that we got to see and enjoy the honor with in DC. This is a massive accomplishment to every individual that was there. I do want to say thank you. Um along with, it was a pleasure finding out and learning so much about this team in DC. I look forward to further collaboration between the two teams. Hopefully, in the future, we do have a little bit more open of a dialogue um to avoid those, those technical issues that we did have this trip. As for that, I do want to, once again, extend my gratitude to Mr. Kraus and his cabinet team for all of the hard work that they did to preparing this agenda, along with the other individuals who had their items submitted as well. I know tonight's agenda was kind of heavy and kind of busy, so I do thank everybody um for their patience. I do wanna extend my gratitude to President Love French with interesting with me's tonight's agenda and board meeting, as this is my first one fully ran by myself. I do want to thank everybody for having patience with me as we did navigate tonight. As for that, I am going to say goodnight, and I hope everybody enjoys the rest of their night and drive safely with the ones that are left. And moving on to sixteen point zero one, trustees, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Justice Soto, I motion that we adjourn?
And Benz, I sec- second?
Very nice. Does anybody wanna talk about it? No, n- nobody? Not one, okay. Trustee Soto is tired. Madame Leve, could we please get a vote?
Yes, trustee Soto?
So do I.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Motion passes three zero, time is eight forty-three.